John, would you deliver the indication, please?
Bill, please help guide this council to make good decisions. Help us make decisions that will benefit our citizens and please be with our police officers, our firemen, and our city workers and help keep them safe throughout the week. In your name we pray, amen.
About property, please.
What allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal?
I got written on my agenda in red, added today, general truck repair approval. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda with that addition as, I guess it's set up Friday?
Friday.
John, if I could, yes, I'd discuss a couple others.
Oh, yes.
Under old business, B, alcohol approval, alcohol license approval. The applicant has asked that this be pulled, so.
Okay, well, then just leave it there and pull it when we get there officially.
As you want. And then also, under new business F, I'd like to add the consideration of a four-way stop on Confederate Old Philadelphia and Philadelphia Lane.
Okay. With that addition, would entertain a motion?
So much.
Got a motion? I heard it from Tony first, could I get a second from you, Kurt?
Sure.
All favor vote by show of hands, thank you. Okay, Jim, I'll give that one for new, uh, who wants Confederate? Now, okay. The men's of the August 6th, 2018 regular meeting, Lisa?
Mayor Weaver filed the meeting for order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Lonnie Waters give the invitation, Councilmember Tony Fountain, the other five of the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to approve the agenda. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. City Clerk Lisa Hoare read the minutes of the July 2nd, 2018 regular meeting. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to adopt the minutes. Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver stated that although there was no old business on the agenda, he would liken that date to City Manager Jim Looney on the Richard Street property donation. Mr. Looney stated that Attorney Bill Pickett was looking into the transfer to the city, in particular, the ownership. He stated that it might be some difficulty in the transfer due to the number of names on the ownership of the property. He also stated that the family had asked that the city be required to use the property as a park. Mayor Weaver stated that he would like to keep this item under old business. Item A under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Haley Buchi of the Jasper Emergency Association to present to council the need for the city to close North Main Street for the Marble Festival. She stated that due to safety reasons, she is asking council to close the street from Saturday morning for the parade through Sunday around 6:30 PM, October 6th and 7th. She stated that vendors will be set up in the parking areas for both days of the festival. Mayor Weaver called on Police Chief Greg Lovell to discuss detouring of traffic during this time. Ms. Buchi stated that the road would be closed from Highway 53 crossing to the old Integra Bank location. She also stated that the JMA would contact all other business owners about the closing and get opinions on the voting. Mayor Weaver stated that he was going to let council make that decision, but he wants to voice his concern that, in his opinion, this will create a heart attack on Main Street. He stated that if he was voting, he would probably vote no. More discussion followed regarding traffic and detour signage. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield asked to abstain from voting as he was a member of JMA. Mayor Weaver said that it was actually a chamber event, so he would be allowed to vote. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to allow North Main Street be closed from Saturday 8:00 AM at race time to Sunday proper at 6:30 PM. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item B under new business, Mayor Weaver called on Mr. Looney to present a letter from Chris Stansfield with the Pickens County Sheriff's Office to request that the city allow the closing of Main Street on August 31st for the show and shine portion of the Jeep Fest from approximately 5:00 PM until after the concert ends at 10:00 PM. Discussion followed, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion that the council approve the closing of Main Street for the Jeep Fest show and shine event held Friday, August 31st. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. On a related request, Mayor Weaver recognized Charles Cudery with Winxology to request a special permit for outdoor beer and wine sales on the same night as the Jeep Fest show and shine event. He stated that council had approved the outdoor sales last year. Mayor Weaver stated that he would be under the same conditions as last year. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to approve the permit. Councilmember Tony Fountain made such motion. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item C under new business, Mayor Weaver recognized Sunny Underwood, Director of Planning and Zoning, to present an application for selling alcohol, beer and wine by the package from Ali and Ron Nochwe, owner of Jasper Enterprises Incorporated located at 585 East Church Street. Mr. Underwood stated that the background check had been received and that there is nothing that would prevent him from obtaining an alcohol license. He is requesting approval to continue the application process. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the continuance of the license application. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Item D under new business, Mayor Weaver called on City Clerk Lisa Hoare to present for council's review two reduced rate applications. Ms. Hoare stated that the applicant qualified for the reduced water sewer rates. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield stated that one of the applicants addressed on the application conflicted with his proof of income, year-end 2017 social security statement. Ms. Hoare stated that it would be confirmed the person lived at the same Jasper address that the water service was being provided. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield made a motion to approve the applications if the address on the one in question was where the person was living. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. At this time, Mayor Weaver entertained a motion to go into executive session at the request of Councilmember Sunny Proctor to discuss a potential legal issue. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made such motion. Councilmember Tony Fountain seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to come out of executive session. Councilmember John Faust seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Mayor Weaver brought the meeting out of executive session and reopened the meeting. Mayor Weaver recognized Councilmember Sunny Proctor to make a motion resulting from the executive session. Councilmember Proctor made a motion that the city of Jasper waive the restriction on the Escrow Economic Development Funds for a one-time use of $1,100 as part of the potential separation agreement for the former economic development director. Councilmember Anson Navy seconded the motion, motion passed unanimously. Finance Director Lisa Hoare gave the financial report for the month of July 2018. Lonnie Waters updated the road account, the county's long roads. Chief Greg Lovell gave a report of police activities for the month of July 2018. Chief Steve Roper gave a report of fire activities for the month of July 2018. Councilmember John Faust gave a report on JYSA. Mayor Weaver recognized City Clerk Lisa Hoare to present an alternative date for September's regular council meeting. She requested that since the first Monday of September's Labor Day holiday, would council be agreeable to the meeting being held on Wednesday, September 5th? Mayor Weaver entertained a motion. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to hold September's regular council meeting on Wednesday, September 5th. Councilmember Tony, uh, Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion, motion carried unanimously. Being no other business to come before council, Mayor Weaver asked for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Anson Navy made a motion to adjourn the meeting council is scheduled to convene next at the regular council meeting to be held September 5th, 2018.
Counsel.
I'd like to know if you made the minutes as read?
Motion second.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. I'd like to say that when I told Mr. Ratfield that he could vote, is that he couldn't get out of it that easy?
Well, and it wasn't as much asking.
Well, I mean, she played that ball, but well, I thought that was.
She has a lot playing up today.
I love that. Because we're all, I think I said, we all belong to something, you can't get out of that if you vote, so that's what that was said. And I'd like it to be said just exactly like that. I said that in college, because we've got a lot of issues that we're gonna have conflicts where then we're gonna need to vote, catch the vote for citizens of Jasper, and it's a good opportunity. Any other discussion? Being done, all favor vote by show of hands. First item under old business, the Richard Street property donation, I'm sorry?
Let's see, go read the call.
We have a call meeting?
Oh, do you have the minutes?
I did, and I couldn't put it clear on the agenda, I'm sorry. We had two meetings, yeah.
Okay, let's, uh, council, your agenda don't indicate this, but we do have another meeting in between this, and it would be neat to maybe put it to the record, then we'll take the minutes.
Okay. This was called council meeting Thursday, August 30th, 2018. Mayor Weaver called the meeting to order promptly at 6:00 PM. He requested Councilmember John Faust give the invitation. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield read the recital, the pledge of allegiance. Mayor Weaver asked that it be noted that Councilmember Tony Fountain was absent due to vacation and that Councilmember Anson Navy would be arriving later. Mayor Weaver asked that the agenda be reviewed and approved by council. Councilmember John Faust made a motion to approve the agenda as presented, and Councilmember Sunny Proctor seconded the motion. Motion carried by the three councilmembers present. Item A under old business, Mayor Weaver recognized City Manager Jim Looney and Sunny Underwood, Director of Planning and Zoning. Mr. Looney stated that a meeting of the Planning Commission had been held on August 20th, 2018. To hear a request from Jaron McLaughlin, applicant, to request a planned unit development be approved on parcel 053D, 079002 of 79.76 acres on Onyx Investment Services LLC and Gateway to the Mountains LLC. Mr. Looney stated that the commission had voted to recommend to the city that the PUD be approved. Mayor Weaver then recognized Mr. McLaughlin to present his preliminary plans to the council. He stated that the acreage was signed for R3 multifamily, but he was asking to do less density than the zoning would allow. He stated that the plans were for eight units per acre and close to a third of the property would not be used. He explained that a PUD basically means that the plans must be approved by the city and that following approval, the developer cannot waver from the plan without coming back to the council for approval. Discussion and questions from the mayor and council followed. Mayor Weaver entertained a motion that the council approve the PUD concept and look forward to the set of plans to come back to council for approval in the near future. Councilmember Sunny Proctor made such motion. Councilmember Kurt Ratfield seconded the motion, motion passed unanimously by the four councilmembers present. Being no other business to come before council, Councilmember John Faust made a motion to adjourn. Council is scheduled to convene next at the regular meeting on September 5th, 2018.
You entertain a motion? Anson Navy made a motion to accept the minutes as read. The motion is second. Discussion. Being done, all favor vote by show of hands. Thank you, counsel. Okay, under old business, item A, Richard Street property donation, we discussed that the other night in the workshop, do you want to let this updated and just go forward?
Right. Uh, council at the July meeting, uh, it was, uh, council considered, uh, accepting property on Richard Street, uh, voted on it, and, uh, the start, uh, city attorney started looking at getting the transfer accomplished. Uh, before the August meeting, uh, he had identified the possibility of it being very difficult to get a clear title to the property. As it turns out, there are a number of wills that have not been probated. He informed me this for our work session last week, that would be approximately $2,500 to accomplish, uh, the transfer of this property. My recommendation is that council not accept this. It is a small piece of property and well, but it would have made a, a nice park area. The investment of $2,500, and that's just an estimate, may be a little bit high. So, uh, I'm asking reconsider, reconsideration of that acceptance of that donation.
You entertain a motion? Motion to accept the city manager's recommendation not to pursue
Yes.
the, uh, property
Same.
on, uh, what's that street?
Richard Street.
Got a motion, and I think I heard Kurt do a second. Any discussion?
Has the family been made aware of this and that they've not expressed any interest in their resolving their estate issues and then possibly?
They have been made aware of it and they have not, and they haven't shown any, any interest, as they would.
And if later on, the issues are resolved, I would certainly not be shy by bringing it back to council.
Any further discussion? Being done, all favor vote by show of hands, unanimous. Okay, Jim, item B, now we can officially strike this off of the agenda?
Yes. The applicant for this license has asked that the application be pulled from consideration.
It's Jasper Enterprises Incorporated, what property is that?
BP on, uh, 53 and Pine Street.
And they're not, will we sell it now? Here, one, okay. Now, obviously they have.
Jasper Enterprises.
Okay. I mean, this, this was the last meeting, then they would've gotten their license, wasn't it? We did everything.
Yes. And they, uh, they talked to Mr. Underwood, who explained that to them and tried to have them consider just, uh, sitting on it for a month, but this was their decision.
Okay. All right, under new business, Winxology alcohol sales, outdoor approval. Uh, I've got Carlos Del Pizio, come up, please, sir. Sure, you've been under the weather just a tad.
Little bit.
We're glad to see you this evening.
Hey, me too, glad to be here.
What can we do for you?
Um, Marble Fest, is Marble Fest gonna be, I mean, I know last year they had the bands on Saturday, and they planned to have bands on Sunday, and we got rained out. So what is the plan this year?
On the Saturday, the, um, bands are the same. There could be the, basically a band, actually the same bands, and, uh, Sunny, uh, on Sunny, to my knowledge, there is no plan, bands can yet, or they're, but.
There'll be vendors down there.
Be vendors, but no band, no music.
No, all right. Because I, last year we were supposed to have bands, but rather than close the street items, gonna.
Main Street will be closed from red light to the wood.
Right. Last year it was only closed Saturday, I was gonna pay for the crossing guard.
It's gonna be closed Sunday.
Yes, it's gonna be closed.
Sunday, but.
It's gonna be closed Saturday.
Yeah.
Actually, Saturday morning, beginning with the race and the parade, it'll not be open again.
Okay. So what events are going on Saturday, Sunday? Just vendors?
Vendors, uh, quarry tours, um.
Okay. And then I probably just, last year I asked for Saturday and, and Sunday, being the bands were supposed to be playing Sunday, but if you're not gonna ask that, multiple bands on Sunday, I would probably just say Saturday would be fine.
No bands on Sunday? So what do you want?
Same thing as we did for.
Well, tell us what it is, we could, we have come back and researched this all the way last year to find out what you did with that question.
The outside, an outside beer garden fenced in like we did last year.
Are you blocking off the Stegall?
Yes. But Stegall will be closed anyhow, right? The main is closed.
Yeah, well, you can get to it from there, so it will be closed. It should not be a problem for the council to make a decision on that street.
Mayor, I remember, is it half of, Stegall, the half closest to your store? The trolley, I believe Lonnie ran it.
Last year, right, I, yeah, I can go halfway, I don't need to go full. So if they're gonna have the trolley running, because Lonnie ran it last year.
Yes.
And, um, yeah, I actually, now that you said that, I forgot about that. We did bring it in so he could come right down past the side.
Come down, roll around, go straight by town?
Yeah, he goes, yeah, he'll come up, I don't know, I think he comes up behind us, and then, and I forgot his whole route, but eventually he'll go back behind, uh, the old railroad station there, and he comes back up that street, and then he'll go down to the trolley.
Put this way, if you've covered up with, uh, customers, talk to Lonnie, he might be able to go up to the old jail and go back down.
I, I actually think that's what he did last year.
Yeah, he would, he probably would do that for a few times.
I think he did that anyhow, but we, we, uh.
Let's look at it this way, the people from the trolley can look right into your beer garden.
Yeah. And I think the trolley stopped by sundown anyhow, by mistake, you know, with the camera on.
Well, with that, would entertain a motion to approve, uh, the request from Carlos Del Pizio to have a beer garden next to his business on Main Street, as Stegall and my. Got a motion?
Sure.
Motion second, discussion. Being done, all favor vote by show of hands. We know we could probably mail this in, but we sure appreciate you coming to ask for this, so we can keep it straight.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carlos.
All right, I'm gonna leave yourself, because I got an early doctor appointment tomorrow, so.
What did they do to you?
I didn't matter. Uh, quadruple bypass.
It's not bad. It's terrible, sorry about that.
Yeah, it wasn't expected, went, actually went for a, uh, stress test, so it happened at the cardiologist's office.
You feel good, you look like you've come along.
Yeah, I feel good, I feel a lot, a lot better than I did.
If I look back there, you look so much younger than you, I remember you looking, so you must be.
Almost forty pounds already.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyhow, thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, item B, uh, Pickens County Hazard Mitigation Plan Resolution, I've got a Kate Westbrook and a John Nicholson. Where's John? He left, he lost, dropped the ball, didn't he?
I'm gonna represent him tonight.
Okay. We're glad to have you, and we appreciate you doing this for us.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate you having, having me. I'm here to represent Pickens County Emergency Management Agency. FEMA requires that every five years, the hazard mitigation plan is done for the county, and it includes all of the cities, of course, under Pickens County. So the plan is finished, it's been GMA, Georgia Emergency Management Agency approved, it's been FEMA approved. Um, the whole point of the plan is to identify the hazards, both natural and man-made, before they happen, which ones, and obviously volcanoes aren't an issue here, um, things that the county could face, and then what can you do ahead of time just to lessen the impact of those hazards on the county. So that's, there were six meetings, um, public meeting as well, to go over the plan, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions, I know it's a thick document, um.
Questions, counsel? I'm gonna throw this one in, I recall years ago, David, I might not should tell this story, but, uh, we, we discussed, of course, we're always concerned about Code Creek or the Etowah, the water basin, and, and I made a statement one time after looking at all the rules and regulations that they tried to cover us, sort of through the hazard mitigation to protect the Long Swamp Creek and how we have so much permit, that, ah, nothing can happen to Code Creek. And it was within a, less than a year, uh, Mr. Weaver, later you need to go to Code, there's been an accident. Sure enough, a concrete truck turned over and was spilling fuel down into the creek. So, anything can happen, uh, hazard mitigation, and, you know, trees can fall on certain animals, whatever the case may be, uh, things can happen. A few things I've heard this week I didn't think could happen, so, uh, we appreciate, what I wanna do is comment for the council, that the county for years has done an excellent job, whether it was Robert Jones, you've been the county commissioner, all the way back to, I'm gonna go back to Don Mull that stage, that the county has always picked up the ball, they'll let, could've let Roper and Lovell make a little speech, but they probably let them like they would want to, uh, always on top of this, and we appreciate the efforts of the county. So what do we need to do? Vote on a resolution tonight?
Yes, sir.
Do you have that resolution?
I do.
Would you like to read it?
Can I ask a few questions before we resolve?
Sure, sure.
I'm just a little bit curious about the.
Well, I made a mistake, we gave Dr. Proctor a copy of it.
Yeah, we did, that's right, I read it. Well, I went through, it, first of all, it's some interesting stuff in there, believe it or not, um, because of all the, um, a lot of historical perspective, all what's going on in our county, but the actual planning process has dollars attached to that, is that, is that something that the county actually commits to and follows, or is that more like a, you know, the comprehensive plan's kind of been accused of being something that we kind of put on a shelf and don't necessarily go through with all the things that we, uh, have, have kind of indicated we might do? So can you give me a little bit about just the planning and follow-through phase of this?
Sure.
So you're talking, you didn't believe what I just said, that y'all always did an excellent job.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The, the truth is, it's gonna sit on the shelf. That's just what it's gonna do, until the day that you need it, and for grant purposes, that's what, um, basically, if you need it, if you, if there's a grant out there through FEMA, GMA, and you wanted to put, do an application for that grant, if it's not listed in here, you'd be immediately ineligible to receive, even to go further through with that grant application. Even though the plan sits on the shelf, um, most of the time, if the plan's not in place, then heaven, and heaven forbid, the county, or the, even the city were to receive a, maybe a tornado came through.
Right.
If it wasn't in place, then you wouldn't be eligible to receive any of the FEMA, the FEMA money that would come in the form of disaster assistance, um, that.
So this is all federally tied to the, tied to FEMA?
Yes, sir. That, um.
That's all the material they have, so.
They, they dangled quite a big carrot, um, to, in hopes that you will sign and adopt this plan, there's potentially lots of money, of course, depending on the severity of the disaster that were to hit here.
And a few of the sticks, in order to get to the carrot, um, they, we, we do have to the plan, but we do meet with this quite often, because of tornadoes, usually start in the spring or summer, and, of course, now we have hurricanes, and then we've actually had hurricanes hit Pickens County in the past, we had the snowstorm in 93, and the tornadoes in 94. Uh, the first two years of 92, 93, 94 were disasters in Pickens County.
Yeah, we've had several tornadoes here.
So, and all that, they can hit, um, locations that can create a chemical hazard or whatever the case may be.
Mr. John.
And again, don't tell Robert I said it, if he's not watching, did an excellent job preparing it. Thank you.
Mr. John Nicholson is very passionate about this, I know that if you have any questions, even outside of this plan that you.
Again, where is he right now?
I don't know where he is.
Well, he's, he's on the agenda, tell him we'll really give.
Um, I told him.
If you would read the resolution, then we can have more discussion on it.
All right. Pickens County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017, 2022. Uh, whereas Pickens County and its municipalities recognize that it is threatened by a number of different types of natural and man-made hazards that can result in the loss of life, property loss, economic hardship, and threats to the public health and safety. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA has required that every county and municipality have a pre-disaster mitigation plan in place, and requires the adoption of such plans in order to receive funding from the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And whereas, a hazard mitigation plan is a community's plan for evaluating, evaluating hazards, identifying resources and capabilities, selecting appropriate actions, and developing and implementing the preferred mitigation actions to eliminate or reduce future damage in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents in the community. And whereas, the Pickens County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017, 2022, has been prepared in accordance with FEMA requirements at 44 CFR 201.6. And whereas, the plan will be updated every five years. Now, therefore, it be resolved, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Pickens County, Georgia, and the mayors and councils of the City of Jasper, the City of Nelson, and the Town of Talking Rock, each meeting in respective session, that, one, Pickens County, Georgia, the City of Jasper, the City of Nelson, the Town of Talking Rock have adopted the Pickens County Hazard Mitigation Plan Update 2017, 2022. And two, it is intended that the plan be a working document and is the first of many steps towards improving rational, long-range mitigation planning and budgeting for Pickens County and its municipalities. Hopefully passed, approved, and adopted today.
Would entertain a motion to approve the resolution as read?
Make the motion to approve the resolution as read.
Motion second, discussion? Being done, all favor vote by show of hands. That's unanimous, and I will sign it for you.
Wonderful, thank you so much, sir.
And I think Lisa needs to sign and date, if you will. Today's date, we find, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you again for coming.
Thank you, sir, very much.
We'll let you have it now, and you can stay with us, or you may proceed on, whichever you choose.
I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you, sir.
Item C, Waterline, the Pickens County Water Chamber Plant, and Grand Hugh Lake, approval will wait and see. Approval will wait and see. David, Jim?
In your package from the work session, you've got a copy of the letter from the county, uh, chairman concerning our meeting of, uh, earlier in August. I cannot remember the date in this, not on the letter. But, uh, we, well, here it is, August fifteenth, special call meeting. Uh, both city council and the commission. After discussion of this situation at our work session. Would, um, like advisement from the council on how they want to proceed with this.
You might tell the council what size of line and how many miles or how many feet. Uh, I think David mentioned at the work session that we might need to discuss. Uh, with the commission, who is going to be the first to be able to purchase the water? Uh, who's gonna have access to it? Uh, have y'all had a meeting with the commission, or anybody from the county commission? No, okay. But what we want to do tonight is basically say, yes, Commissioner, we would like to continue our discussions, and yes, we are very interested in running the water line to Grandview Lake where you intend to build the water treatment plant. Is that somewhat correct?
And, and I would like for council to consider the idea of possibly having a, uh, in any agreement, a stated amount of water that we can expect to get from this, uh, process. We're doing the, uh, the, uh, three miles of line, and whether it's ten-inch pipe or a six-inch pipe. It is quite an investment by the city. I would like for council to consider a minimal amount, the minimum that, that.
Well, what would be, I think, appropriate is that the council tonight, we've all read the letter, and Robert asking if we will participate in this, in this letter, basically. And I would like for you to ask for a motion that would allow yourself, David, and myself continue to negotiate in good faith for this letter. That yes, we are wanting to do this. It's our service delivery area, as we discussed at the meeting that we had with the commission. And, and at this meet, these meetings, we can come back to this council with, yes, we continue to meet, and we're, the process is there, because what we also want, I believe we discussed this, is the county, we, we would hate to run the water line at expense. And the county may choose to relocate the, the, the treatment facility. And we, here we'd be spending money without any need for it, except we serve fifteen, twenty customers, and maybe some of those people who wanted water to pack. May have drilled wells, and they might not be ready customers. But they, they will be in the future, because Grandview area, I'm quite, a little bit familiar with their well water, and it's a lot, a lot of it has iron, a lot of it has sulfur. You, you kind of pop luck when you hit, uh, when you drill a well, pop luck. But with that being said, tonight, if we can keep this open-ended council, where we could allow the administration to continue to, uh, negotiate and come back to us with updates, and let's give them full faith to go ahead and sign off and do whatever to, as Commissioner asks in good faith that we do this, that we offered at that meeting pretty much. So I think, would that not be the best way to encapsulate this, that we will have, you have all the power to go out, but we want you to come back to us and tell us what you did, and, and, uh, we can make decisions at that particular time. And the commission, given the only good faith ability to treat the facility, and, and we want some dates, because David and I have a disagreement on how much time it's gonna take to get there, how many man, how much manpower it's gonna take. Got to go to one creek.
And if I can set up one thing, too, this is, without jumping on the couch toes, again, I know y'all have told me.
Well, we prefer.
To stay off of it. Uh, three hundred thousand gallon day facility. Uh, Robert said in the meeting, he's only gonna run it half the time. So that's a hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, one hundred fifty thousand gallons a day, that's what we sell them. So all they're gonna do is take that two hundred fifty dollars from us that we're making off of them and put it back into us. And we will, we'll be actually taking a loss for laying up.
Well, this, but, but this will allow us to negotiate that a hundred fifty thousand gallons, when, when, maybe Sunday, they all water three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons. That can be released downstream. We can treat the water in the future for them. I think, I think there's a way that we can play this both ways. The county wants a treatment plant. It's clear and simple. We said that in a meeting, and let them have a treatment plant. But we can be a great backup for them. He wanted to be a backup for us. As if they're not treating three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons, we can catch it. If they release it. Now, there's gonna be some loss according to the engineers through cracks and crevices that disappears coming down the creek. I, I, I think it'll get to us, 'cause most cracks and crevices are pretty full coming down that creek.
So we're gonna send operator up there to run it?
No, 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 no.
I don't understand how you're gonna get that.
And the relation.
Release it, release it, release it.
To the creek.
Engineers, it'll drive, we've got the.
Well, hey, I, I think we could, we could get a good start with it anyway. We'll take what's left when it gets to us, and it may, may not be there. But our goal is to make sure an inch and a half goes over our spillway during the most extreme drought conditions.
And at the same time, I want to remind the council, we are, uh, starting to survey potential customers from Grandview down to where we'll be tying into the, uh, city's line for possibility of new service. Potential eighty customers.
That's one of my questions. The, the residents around Grandview Lake itself, and the residents own out Grandview all the way back over to Burn Mountain Road. I know several people on that road that's been, been asking for city water for years, and it's just, it's just not looked at before we.
The day after the meeting, I had somebody, uh, from that area come in and try to fill out an application, and I had to say, that's, that's waited a little bit to have our bill again.
He's gonna take the application.
So, 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 so I, I apologize, I missed that, but just to get us up to speed. All, all we're, all we're looking to mind is to let our city manager, mayor, and our secretary of worship, David Hile, go further into negotiations with the county, and, um, before it's said and done, again, you should come back to us, and then we'll have, then we'll have final expenditure, what's gonna cost.
Well, David, can I quote you, David? David is a glass half-full type guy. He, he totally feels that the county's gonna take our water and take it over and sell it to Beacon New or East Merrier and, uh, who else, which would be their right to do. But at that time, we might want to negotiate what's it gonna take to go through our system and our lines. All that is negotiation for the next, and it's gonna be, what I like about this, three hundred thirty-three thousand gallons is for forever, it's for perpetuity. The word I like the most when you deal with water, because EPD won't give you anything unless it can be counted on the most extreme drought. So that, that's what we're at. We, we want these guys, if I'm not there to be able to go, I'd love to be there, though, but. Uh, negotiate this and get all this beat out. Because I think it's, I think we're gonna be the first customer, like I feel Robert, for me, now, we wanna be the first customer for the water. And for doing it, so it's back to them, 'cause we, we gotta play the game of waters. They'll be the first customer.
David, we, we haven't agreed to anything. We've just said we're willing to agree to some.
I know.
And I mean, we got some pretty strong negotiators, and this is our, this is our most valuable resource in our town.
I agree with.
And in our city, and, you know, if we collaborate on this, we save them a bunch of money. Whether they want to admit it or not, we, and I hate to say they and them and us, but we save the citizens money. And, and, and we're not just gonna give them that money. I mean, we've talked about tying in, you know, making our plans, uh, better. Well, the county is now a partner on that, and, and we just, I mean, I think it's a unbelievable opportunity, even though it may not be exactly what we want. As the mayor said, there's three hundred thirty thousand more gallons a day that we can treat that we can't treat right now. And that's all.
And that's all the negotiations, it gives you a chance to address those fears and say, we don't want this to happen. This is what we need. Like Jim's saying, we get so much.
You had to have some of that.
No.
No, but I want to say that you have some very valid points.
Very good.
And, and I think you being in the negotiation, knowing, you know, I'm comfortable with that because you're well aware of all the issues. You know, I feel good about that, you going in to say, wait a minute, what about these concerns? So at least where you're gonna address these things, and so I appreciate everything that you've done. And I think everybody does. I think we just think it's a good opportunity, but you're, you're right. There's some valid points.
I like, I like going one step further. Everything that y'all said, I totally agree with, but as good, as good a staff as David has in himself, there's nobody better in the city of Jasper than that man to be in these negotiations, along with the mayor and the city manager. And, and your concerns, you should voice your concerns in these meetings and let, and hash it all out to where we're all on the same page when this comes back to the city council, where there's no, no gray area here and nobody's in the dark.
If you're not here with what you want, you need, you need to let us know, or you need to let, certainly need to let them know, but, no, we, we.
That's your knowledge base is there. We need you to help protect it.
Okay, but I still think you're a man with a glass half-full. Uh, but that being said, we, we dealt with the county before, and, uh, and like Commissioner said at the time, and you guys said, it's, it's a different little time, because I have stood toe-to-toe, and we stood toe-to-toe against the county on service delivery areas and, and little civil things that have been discussed in the past. Uh, but civil thing for us, the city of Jasper, is we've got the commercial area, and we've got to make sure that it has a water source for the future and not count on other counties, et cetera, et cetera. And, uh, there's other reservoirs besides Grandview that's full, that also have dam issues that someday will have to do repairs, and most little property owners don't want to spend that kind of money. And that's, things will be facing the council in the future, so Grandview is just kind of maybe a little benchmark that we can use. But with that, I would like the council to make a motion somewhere along the lines of allowing city manager, David, and myself to, uh, negotiate with the county in good faith in order to explain to the council that we're, we're moving forward. We want to run a water line there. Uh, we want them to have their treatment facility. And, uh, but with that, would entertain a motion that we proceed on with, uh, sending a letter back to the commissioner saying, yes, sir. We will be happy to run the water line. When? Are you gonna build a treatment plant? What dates? And, and, uh, all, and who's gonna get the water? All the things that we're gonna be discussing. Uh, we'll send a letter back answering the commission. Would entertain a motion.
I'd like to, I'd be proud to make a motion that we allow the mayor and Jim Looney and David to, uh, move forward with negotiating with the county to maximize the citizens' benefit of the treatment of water in Grandview Lake.
Okay, that's a motion. You got motion that, Lisa? And he'll say the citizens of Jasper, since we're representing Jasper, we're gonna let the commissioner represent the county. Uh, 'cause I promise you, there is, there is a difference, and, uh, but it's all we're gonna go through our, our different pipes. Uh, was that a second? We got a motion, the second? Discussion? Is this kind of what you wanted out of this, Jim, tonight?
Yes, yes, I would, we need to ask for action, some, some motions to move on forward with the county office.
Any other discussion? David, any other thing you want to say? Being on the discussion, all paper vote by show of hands. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, guys. You did a good job. Watershed, same crowd, watershed, this is so much fun we have to do, watershed protection plan. Yeah, yeah. Counsel, David's gonna say a lot of stuff about this watershed protection. A lot, a lot of things is gonna come out, and this, this gives him, will give him ultimate authority to say, turn off your sprinkler systems, turn, quit feeding your chickens, uh, you ain't gonna wash your cars anymore. Uh, during drought conditions, you'll find that.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and if people don't realize, it's not raining that much in the last six days, well, six weeks. Been a monsoon every morning, every day from, until July the fourth.
Creek's still living in the first well, though, so that's a guess.
It's good, son?
None of it.
Yes.
Right, David, Jim? Go ahead.
Uh, before you have a plan, a watershed protection plan, uh, that has been presented to the city by Ms. Catherine Fox, uh, correct, she affiliated with it, did you?
And she's doing it as Fox Environmental, environmental, she.
Okay, and before you have a list of tests that the city, uh, is gonna be responsible for on an annual reporting requirement. And what you're agreeing to tonight, uh, with this plan is saying that the city will have these tests done by a professional organization that is capable of doing these tests or approved to do these tests on an annual basis, and that the proposed long-term monitoring plan is designed to meet all requirements of EPD's watershed protection grants for long-term monitoring as required for city, city's wastewater treatment plan, NPDES discharge permit. City representatives hopefully develop a monitoring.
Give the definition of NPDES.
National Protection, uh, pollution, discharge.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to eat you with that. This is a test.
I don't, I don't know.
Uh, it's point source of, uh.
Discharge.
Discharge.
Yeah.
It don't have to be a wastewater treatment plant. It can be a chicken farm. It can be that stormwater running down the sidewalk into the creek. Whatever, it's the water.
And the city's responsible for all of it, not just the wastewater plant, the stormwater ponds, what's coming off the pavement, everything. And that's what they're gonna stop. They're gonna stop. You're gonna be responsible for the streams leaving your municipality, wherever you're at. It's gonna be your responsibility as the council, mayor, and city manager to keep this up, uh, and monitor it. And everything that you're over on, you're supposed to get, we're supposed to get with the county and come up with ways to lessen the, you know, impact that we have on the local streams. And identify and eliminate polluted sources. And, uh, implementation of more cost-effective approaches with regulatory compliance. As previously discussed, water quality assessment will be conducted on an annual basis for five locations. So the five streams, the biggest streams they find leaving the city of Jasper, they will monitor. And we will be responsible for paying for that monitoring, and then we'll be responsible for the.
Let me give the public an example. Uh, today, not, not hitting Georgia Power, it was actually a contractor working on Georgia Power's lines were spraying herbicide on cudzoo that we use to fight soil rotting. Of course, when it runs up your power lines, it runs, it's gotta come down somehow. If they were spraying it, where does that poison end up?
Right.
And where does that stream down my side of town, where does it end up, out of water, inside? And a few years ago, the county, not this administration, a few administrations back, sprayed ever bit of cudzoo, retarded all over the county, and all that fed into the system. That's, would not be allowed anymore, would it not?
Well, I mean, with this, when this right here really gets into where these towns and municipalities are having to follow this. Like I say, it's been very vague. They've done the assessment, but nobody ever really has jumped in and started doing the testing. Once the testing starts, and she has been an article in the paper this year about the fecal problem that Pickens County has already in its streams, probably wouldn't want to.
Well, our largest.
Fish in the stream.
Fecal.
Yes.
Well, our largest pollutant is chicken manure.
Yeah. So what this is trying to, and when you read your book, I think everybody has a book, Jim. Uh, it tells you, they're trying to get it toward you can actually fish with safety. You know, you don't have to worry about the fish you have caught having, you know, too much people called for them to actually eat. So same way when you go to the beach and it's got the sign up saying, you know, no swimming, E. coli high, or whatever.
But our wastewater, our wastewater treatment is the safest discharge that we have in the county.
Yes, I mean, a lot of this is gonna come, you know, from your lakes and these sedimentation ponds, you know, there's no oxidation going on. So that pond's sitting there, you know, animals coming by and everything else sitting there. So that's not telling what the fecal count is in one, one of these big holding ponds that holds the water to where it doesn't wash the string away, but at the same time, you're holding that water, and it's, you know, water's.
The retention pond will be a, a problem.
Yes, you know, so all of that is gonna be, um, put on y'all. Uh, once this testing is complete, uh, we'll have to get with, you know, our surrounding counties and cities and come up with a plan to lessen that, and that's all this is. This is just to say that we will do the testing, not that we're gonna hire Fox, correct?
No, it's not that we're hiring Fox. Uh, this is a condition of your wastewater permit, and, uh, Fox will give us. And Fox will give us a letter to confirm that we acknowledge the plan, accept the plan.
Why did Fox do this? I've been asking that question. Are they retained by the E P D? Or they just show up and that's part of their marketing scheme?
That was my feeling, was it that she was. That's what she made me feel, that E P D had sent out certain people.
I'm not familiar with it either.
But we will, the monitoring, we will certainly get a.
Has anybody asked Ben Turnasit about this firm and are they familiar with it? They can come give you more updates.
And we're going to work with Ben and getting other people to bid on the monitoring that needs to be done to.
Well, they might know a little bit about Fox too, Chris Pogey anymore. Go ahead.
That's it, we're accepting this. Fox will be giving us a letter for the mayor to sign. I had hoped it would be here so it could be signed tonight, but it is not. And in the agreement or in the plan, we are agreeing to monitor the water. We're going to have to find somebody to do that, whether it's Fox Enterprises or someone else that Turnasit suggests we get quotes from.
For the watershed protection plan, this thing goes back into the mid-nineties. So this isn't anything new. No, this, we had to do a watershed protection plan in order to be able to apply for a wastewater permit discharge. Goes all the way, went all the way back to the nineties because they woke up one day in Atlanta deciding that all of our little cities north of the fall line was discharging and using up all our water and wastewater permits. And so they came up with a watershed protection plan out of the legislature. And it cost every city and water system in North Georgia, all of Georgia. We paid one hundred fifty, two hundred thousand dollars for this. We kept writing checks to the North Georgia R D C. I'd take them a carton and deliver them. And they continued working on the process and it was a big operation and it was just a mandate that was non-funded. And here, this is.
This is a body of that.
This is the same thing. It's part of our wastewater permissions, but it is un-funded.
We spent a lot of money on this thing. This is going to be expensive.
Yes.
Well, just on here, something over a hundred thousand, just on what we've kind of agreed that we're going to have to commit to.
Yeah. We're testing for those spineless bugs.
And we've never spent that before or we used to spend it and we're not anymore?
Well, we've had a break for the last few years from the watershed plan and now they're trying to implement it, it looks like.
Yes, she's already working for the county, Ms. Fox is. She's already doing that.
At least because she's coming from it. County does not have a wastewater treatment plan. So they're still having non-source issues. And their issues, probably more through Limestone Valley, is dealing with wastewater from chicken.
And this can be in the water plant, I mean, also. There is a part in here.
But when they get into the surface water, they'll be dealing with that more.
Yeah.
But with that, I think you're asking for a motion to proceed on with this and to give, for me to sign that document.
Permission for you to sign the acceptance that I will follow up with Catherine Fox and get it available for you to sign.
Okay, and I want to make a phone call myself pertaining to the Fox Corporation. But with that, council, we entertain a motion to allow myself to sign any documents that Jim bring to me dealing with the watershed protection plan so that we would be.
In compliance.
In compliance is the word I was looking for.
But we're not actually approving any dollars in this with.
I make a motion that we approve the watershed protection plan as presented to mayor and council.
That good enough, David, for us to sign that and allow me to sign the document that would keep us in compliance? Got the second in? Motion second, discussion?
Hopefully we'll be able to bring out three bills.
And figure out a bit more what's going on with E P D. Any other discussion? Ben and all people show hands. Thank you, council. Okay, next item, item E, jetter truck repair approval. David, you want to hang around for this?
No, I can cut this out.
Add it to that.
Thank you, David.
If council, as you remember, sometime during the month of August, the engine in the jetter truck failed. I asked for emergency permission to purchase this eleven thousand seven hundred dollar replacement engine. Would like to have a vote from council to have an open meeting to verify that purchase.
Motion to approve eleven thousand seven hundred for jetter truck repair?
Yes.
Got a motion? Got a motion? Hang on. Got a motion, second? Current? Discussion? We have two jetter trucks. One, the pump has gone out on as well. Has that been repaired yet?
The motor has not been repaired yet. The other is what they call a mustang and has just not got the capacity to do the work.
Well, I thought we had another truck available with a pump that was gone. I thought folks got it repaired. But with that, we're not, I didn't mean to bring that in. Eleven thousand seven hundred, got a motion, second, discussion? Any further discussion? Ben and all people show hands. Thank you, council. Item F, no left turn sign in Mark Whitfield and Fifty Third.
And we added the four-way stop at Confederate, Old Philadelphia Confederate and Philadelphia Lane. Council, at prior work sessions, has been discussed the possibility of making the turn off of Mark Whitfield between the drugstore and Mike Lowe's property. Making that road no left turn, discussed it with different people. It is an action that can be made by council even if it is going on to a state road. And recommend a approval of turning it into a no-left turn.
I'll make a motion to propose a no-left turn sign at Mark Whitfield and Fifty Third.
Have a motion to approve this no-left turn. John, a second by Ann. Discussion? Why is that, Jim?
It's a blind turn.
Short block.
Blind.
You come over that hill and Jasper Drugstore are not that long. Okay, and along with this, we also have a left turn going into the bank of North, used to be the Bank of North Georgia. What's it called today?
Snovis.
Snovis, yeah, okay. And that, we allowed that years ago, back before traffic was an issue and it still happens. But one car can try to turn left into their drive-through and back traffic over the hill if no one left in. But this might help a little bit to somebody, it's really a mess if somebody's trying to make a left turn in front of that.
Yeah, there is a sign there asking people not to block that entrance to Snovis, but I've seen many, many times.
Say about Fifty Third, you can hit.
Everybody back under the light.
It's not a little side street. We could ask them not to do that on Whitfield Street, it's hard to do at Fifty Third. But with this, I think this would be a helpful, good start. So we might have some feedback probably for people, but not many people want to make a left turn there. Anybody who knows.
Smart ones don't.
Those who are still alive.
Those that are still alive.
Okay, John made a motion and Ann, did you second it? Somebody seconded it. Any further discussion?
Do we, do we do these separate?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. John made a motion to approve that and Ann seconded it. To put a no-left turn sign and might do some marking on the road to make sure that they're only turning right and not even love to go straight across, which they could if there was no traffic.
One, they would be entering a one-way road the wrong way, wouldn't they? No, it'd be the right way, not the wrong way.
Yeah, so you jump across there, but that's dangerous as well. What you need to do is go down to the U-turn at Holly Street, hang a left, come back up.
Well, I can change my motion to a right turn only.
Right turn only would be the best way of doing that because you can't get across that street.
Let me change my motion to a right turn only.
Okay, I want to ask you. That's just, we're seeing that and we got a motion now, you're going to create a nightmare on backing this off. I think I understood John to say he only wanted a right turn only on that. And that was a second, Ann, Snavy?
Well, I can't go straight across like I did when I'm heading up.
You can, but you might get a ticket. I'd say during, obviously right now, you can get away with it. But you can't, unless we want to spend a lot of money saying, you can do it now and you can't do it now. You pull, you can pull across there and when they stop you, it's like, you know, I'm a city council member. Yeah. As a right, your ticket.
They can take a right and then a left and go back that way. They can take a right then a left.
But you can actually turn right there, go down next to the next to Richard Street and be a lot safer.
You might want to take out those of the water in the council.
You're talking about selling that property? Okay.
If I do what I had in, I would.
Right turn lane only.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion? What made you come up to this? Did somebody bring your attention?
Council members have been mentioning it.
I'm mentioning it.
It has been discussed in our work session.
Well, I've been wanting to turn traffic all the way down the other directions. We go down and go out Richard Street, like we do during festivals, et cetera, et cetera. But with this, I think it'll work better. Any other discussion? Ben and all people show hands. Thank you, council. See you now, Mr. Jim. Now, the next item.
Next item, we have a request from one of the business owners in the area to consider a four-way stop on Old Philadelphia Road where Confederate and Old Phila- Philadelphia Lane cross. There is also some concern with signage on that corner, on one of those four corners. I can do that without council action. I can make some improvements there. But we'd like council to consider a four-way stop. And I did go out and look at it today. I think it's a something that could help. There have been, what did I talk about? A lot of accidents, but the business owner did tell me of some accidents that happened there.
Now, Confederate doesn't want to go down into the.
Mount City Business Park.
There are almost, I mean, for four, it's not right there?
May I address it?
There are only seven, there are only seven out through the county.
Well, this, this, this four-way stop would be the most needed because you have between fifty to eighty employees at the garment industry there.
Good number of businesses up here, some tater patch.
And well, then on the left, still on the left side, you've got Jeep, you've got all these businesses down there that I think employs probably at least one hundred fifty people. And on the other side, wherever Dawson's Tractor is, you have about, I'd say forty-five, forty, forty-five employees plus tater patches up there.
And Napa.
And Napa.
Napa wrote the laws from Dawson's.
Okay, where's the other sticker? But you got, what you got is a curve that the design of this is not the best in the world. You've got limited signs and you've got high speeds and you've got a lot of traffic coming in and out. And I think you got a better potential for an accident there than on Aminda Street and Grady Street, all those streets that have stop signs further over. And I know you're not a fan of stop signs, but this one here could save your own life.
That'd be the fourth, that'd be the fourth stop sign.
But the first one in the city though.
County just beat the three.
But this one here, I believe, is dangerous intersection.
And I know this is something being thrown at you. You may want to drive out there and look at it.
Go look at it.
Is there interest or concern from more than just the one business owner?
I've heard media discussion on this. I didn't ever want to really do it, but it's actually tight.
It's not uncommon when someone comes and asks for a speed bump, let's get more than one person involved.
Oh, we wouldn't want to do that.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about speed bumps, I'm just saying.
Who doesn't want a speed bump?
No, that's not what I'm saying. Someone's asking for a stop sign.
I think what we can do, I think, why don't you just take a look at it before they make that decision?
Yeah, that would be my suggestion. I think that'd be helpful, drive out there. I threw this one on you fresh, we had not discussed it. Come out there and.
I gave it to you in the beginning.
What time, what time do a lot of the businesses there around Confederate, they close by afternoon? Around five o'clock maybe?
It's busy at lunch. It's busy at lunch. Yeah, remember you got lunch traffic out there.
You've got E's over there. Quite a bit, and plus you're looking at Walmart back door and it's a shortcut through town back across. It's a very busy road.
I agree, since it's just now been brought up. I would feel more comfortable as far as just myself looking on this until we go and maybe.
How do you feel about that?
I agree with Tony. I think we should table it until we go.
And I, I'm not a big stop sign. Growing up here, if you can't drive around Jasper, there's something wrong. But I'm not a big fan of stop signs, four-way stops. It seems like the whole city's a four-way stop and stop sign. But if there is concern and a need as far as accidents, then by all means, I'm all for that. But I think by just now being brought up to us, if we could, oh, maybe go out and look at it and maybe next council meeting, come back at the group.
I think they would understand the duty, Jim.
I have excellent. I've got the person requesting.
Oh, a person requesting is not looking for immediate.
I will have to say the one on Hood Road is done exactly what it needed to do, the four-way stop.
Oh, yes.
Really? And how much grief I got over that.
Well, I mean, if we could just stop them from doing nothing around that curb, we'd be okay to.
What, on Hood Road?
Yes.
What, on the curb?
Right as you come out.
At Janette.
At Janette.
What, come on, you got a curb house? Were you trying to? Well, I did, I tell you another. I'm going to discuss those stop signs as. I didn't want to initiate the stop signs on Burke Mountain and Cold Road. That was just a terrible idea. Could you imagine trying to get out of that road today with no traffic control device?
It's harder than that with.
It is.
If you're on Bridgewater.
Yeah, Bridgewater's a good bike. You need to go the other way.
You're right.
But it's crazy at the traffic that we've already had. And of course, we put the stop sign on South Main Street at Sellers and Main and we've not had any accidents in that area lately.
Recently, it's the way you love to sign it up.
Did it, we then get the, then get the.
Now, did you get the fire?
I guarantee with that sign, I ran that stop sign at least.
Is that working, mayor? Is that working? Have we seen a difference in that since that's been out there?
Which one?
At the Woodbridge. At Mike Harrison's.
Oh, you get, I believe, I believe we're getting more traffic on that road and that was the goal. But I stopped and I tell you what it does. It has stopped, stopped the honey spot for the guys catching cars coming through town too fast. They, we used to.
That was the original plan for that stop sign, the traffic control panel, but not yet.
Because they were, you coming through town, you come by the monument going thirty-five, forty, fifty miles an hour and all of a sudden you're on Main Street.
Somebody's backing out.
It's scary. But by law, you can't put a stop sign up to control speed.
So we need to act on the four-way stop at Old Philadelphia Confederate.
Yeah, we're table, we're tableing the next one, give you a chance to look at it, become.
I don't know if that'll take a vote to table it or not.
Yeah, we're just having a motion to table the request.
I make a motion that we table the four-way stop at Old Philadelphia Confederate until next month's meeting.
Kind of old business. Got a motion, second, discussion? Ben and all people show hands. Let us table. Thank you, council. Item G, garbage service proposals, Jim?
Council, at the work session the other night, I was asked to do a little pro forma on our current customer profile and what the new rates would look like in revenue. That is included in your package. It's a difference of approximately four thousand dollars a month, an increase of four thousand dollars a month. That's included for your consideration. Uh, that's included for your consideration. Uh, I would recommend council, uh, plan a, uh, public hearing on this. And I may be stepping on another council member's toes, or council member's toes, who was maybe gonna propose that. But my recommendation is that, uh, before any changes be made to our current, uh, garbage service, that, uh, we listen to the, uh, community.
To the person that has city garbage. I know we've discussed this in the past and, you know, the comment was made that we didn't get in, the garbage business would get out. And after those discussions, a lot of, you know, uh, work sessions, the city, the city that's, the people that has that service right now provide it by the city really, really likes that service. So, I think you're on the right track letting them have a, letting them have a voice in this and letting us know what their, their wishes be.
Can we set a date on it?
I would, uh, yeah, that would be my recommendation.
What next, our next council meeting, could we not just?
Oh, you want to do it at the council meeting?
I wouldn't do that either.
Why not?
I mean, would that, would that not be- How long do you want a council meeting to be?
I mean, would that not be the perfect place for the, the people that want to voice their opinion when we get together? I, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to cause confusion. I just didn't know when-
My concern-
When would you, when would you get with the people and let them?
My concern with doing it during a council meeting is just the length of it, Tony. Uh, but it, it, it's council's decision. It could be a long session.
Could we put it out long enough where we can get it advertised? And ever, you know, try to get it out on the paper and everywhere so that people know.
Yeah, we-
Let's try to do it the Thursday before the workshop.
Well, you, what, what do we do, what do we do on the work session now?
I guess my question would be is if we don't have, if, if they don't get a chance to come before- If they don't get a chance to come before Mayor and Council and City Manager voice their opinions, then who, who are they going to?
Well, I, I think it's a work session when, I, I think it's a meeting that council attends. I just didn't, I question having it on the same night as a, as a work session or a council meeting. Normal council meeting.
We've had council meetings when the whole building, the hall was full.
Well, that's great. We've been there. Doesn't say we want to do it every time.
If you feel-
A little fear holds back.
If you feel like the Thursday work session before our next regular council meeting is the last time, that's fine.
We finish up, we have work session.
Is everybody available?
I, I'd sit before then, and that way we could discuss what we heard at the first session.
Well, we'd be right before the council, right before the work session.
Right, the day before the work session?
Would be Wednesday, the twenty-fifth.
That's two payments we have to pay.
And that'll be the twenty-sixth.
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 Okay.
And what time is our work session on the twenty-seventh?
Six.
Six o'clock.
And so I believe that we're gonna give people time to get off work and to be present. I think we would stick to six.
Yeah, but thank the way John's, my, the fact the way John's willing is, John's willing to have the public appear on the day before, on the Wednesday before a work session on Thursday. Is that not right, John?
That's correct. So, that's what we soak in what they bring to us, and then we can discuss it on Thursday. Gives us time to soak it in about it. Be worthy. Just business.
Okay, so, what date do we got? Give me, give me the date, John. I got, I called for a motion. Make, make a motion, John.
Twenty-sixth. Make a motion to have a public hearing.
Is that Wednesday?
It is.
Wednesday, the twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, six o'clock. To discuss, uh, the garbage truck, what the citizens of Jasper, as far as the service-
I say the future of the garbage in Jasper would be a good way of quoting that. Say. I got a motion and second. Uh, we're gonna have a column meeting on, uh, September?
September.
The twenty-sixth?
Yes.
At what time, six o'clock?
It'll be three weeks. It'll be three weeks from today.
In order to discuss the future of the City of Jasper's garbage.
Please, do you get that advertised?
We can forward on getting it advertised. Would, would you like to see a, a, a special ad in the paper or just something in?
I think it'd be a special ad.
You can get that.
And my, my, my talk to Mary, since she's there, she might like to sell us a ad as well.
No, we're not married.
She's in business. Oh, and-
And help, help us out with your special news.
Bet your use.com like how little ad is worth.
Someone's did list two hundred and forty thousand.
John'll charge us too much. We appreciate you coming and videoing our events.
We would do that if there, was there a vote?
Not yet. Any other discussion? Been on favor vote by showing hands? Thank you, Council. Was that you now, Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Um, all right, down, the cans down the road, Jim. Uh, next item is H, Blight Ordinance Committee Formation.
Uh, I'd like to recommend to council, they form a committee to study the blight ordinance and continue, uh, with the process. We have had discussions on it. I think, uh, this is something that can be finalized and presented to council fairly quickly.
Okay, I think John and Ann have been the champions of the blight ordinance. Am I correct? I know John and- Well, I'm gonna put you on the committee anyway. So, uh, John and Ann served on that committee. They have no other options. You, what do you serve as then?
Jim, what are we waiting on from Bill? Steve?
Uh, Bill's waiting on recommendations from council on how to proceed with it, wanting to finalize it. So, this committee would be presenting any additions to the, uh-
Why is Bill not here?
Don't know either. Uh, Bill's looking for recommendations. So, this committee would be presenting recommendations for him to put in the verbiage and have a product presented to council as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Did that, I got a really confused look like I just-
We've already given that, and he's already given back to us.
Well, now you're on the, now you're on the committee, you'll be able to ask him that directly.
He's, he's not comfortable that what he has done is-
Okay.
Is what council wants.
Okay, with that, no action necessary? Item I, Metal Building Ordinance Committee Formation?
Uh, this one is not as far down the road as the blight ordinance. We do have a sample, um, metal building ordinance that's been looked at. Uh, I have some concerns with, with the sample and would recommend that another committee be established to-
Can I establish the same committee because they're gonna double whammy with this thing? It actually, I mean, they, they almost tongue-grained. With that, I'd like to make a motion if John and Ann would take that committee as well. You'd be, because what you finally got on there, or you stayed there?
Yeah.
Okay? Don't make, don't make the form of another meeting.
I will work on-
And we, we like to have, we like to have a report from that each month.
Well, on the-
Under our business.
Particularly the blight ordinance. I think that will be moved on fairly quickly.
Okay. No other necessary business on that. Uh, let's go to I, Dog Park Run Approval, let's say, as I wish you-
I think it's a check.
Stop putting approval, put it maybe.
Consideration.
Yeah, yes, I'm gonna work that approval. Uh, Jim?
At the work session, I gave you a quote for fencing, an estimate of equipment, signage.
Jim, let's start back and tell everybody what a dog run is, a dog park.
Uh, this particular large park.
And what's gonna be and et cetera.
Uh, it would be in the Jasper City Park, in the area near the tennis courts. Actually, two dog runs, a smaller one with two hundred and twenty-eight linear feet. Uh, and then a one for larger dogs with two hundred and seven linear feet. Would have a, a, a man gate and also name foot gates where equipment can go in there and maintain the, uh, the property, maintain the grass. Equipment could be anything from, uh, a, uh, recycled material to wood. I would suggest we look at recyclable materials. Uh, and then would include signage that our liability insurance is asking for. Uh, and also, uh, uh, dog waste stations would have to be installed on, on both of the runs.
Do you have a diagram of what these look like, these runs you're talking about?
They are actually posted at, we, we have signs out on the property that could be looked at.
What was the signs again? I know you said linear.
Linear feet, the smaller one is two hundred and twenty-eight linear feet, the larger are two hundred and seventy.
Yeah.
Two seventy?
Yes.
Have we had that much feedback from the, from the citizen list? Actually, more than this? You have?
There has been, there has been some. It was discussed, uh-
Can we have a public hearing on this?
Sure, we can do it same time with the garbage.
I think, I think we should. We're, we're gonna trade garbage-
Add that to-
We're gonna trade, we're gonna trade garbage for a dog run.
If we lose two hundred and forty thousand, I wouldn't love to donate.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Do we have a, do you have a, uh, and once again, I assume this is the last meeting that I missed, and I apologize for missing. Um, do you have a, uh, estimated proposal as far as money-wise, what this is gonna cost the city?
I have a quote for seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the fencing. Uh, I'm estimating a thousand dollars for equipment, three thousand dollars for signage, total of eight thousand.
Yeah, eight thousand.
Five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
You said three-
Yeah, that's ten thousand, yeah.
He meant three hundred, I believe.
Three hundred percent.
Three hundred percent. What about, what about maintenance?
Uh, would have to be maintained by our current crews.
So, a total of eighty-five hundred dollars.
Eighty-five seventy-seven.
This is something garbage people could do.
Do, but they maintain that over there now, though.
Yes, I mean, we, we mow that area now.
Yes, sir. Somebody put those gas.
It's actually got some.
And, and I guess why I'm asking about it, and I, I assume Ann has been approached by this, I, I have not, I don't. So, I, I guess I'm going in this blind because I haven't heard anybody that's, that's enough to have a place to walk about. Now, I know, know the county has a pretty popular, a popular thing here. Does it not? It's that popular here in Jasper, so.
Well, I think we have had discussions before of, uh, trying to keep dogs off the ball fields, and this would, would help with that.
Could you walk, could you walk the ducks over there and keep them off of the front?
I would hate to clean up after the ducks over there, but you have to, we have.
And while we're on this, I think that's, that needs to be discussed because I have heard people walk in the park that's, get really aggravated with the duck droppings on the walking path. Not what we knew about that, but that might be-
We have, I think we have permission to move forty and working on that.
To-
Forty is not nearly enough to solve the problem.
How often can we move forty?
You know, I'm not sure how often they can allow us to ask, but, uh-
Yeah, we're talking about domesticated, uh, those geese, uh, the geese. You're gonna, we're gonna move the geese, the goose, or are you gonna call them out? And why, hey, gonna flip his wing and keep him coming back?
I'll, I'll let Lonnie decide all of that.
I've never figured that out. How do you move their finger? They buy what they want.
Getting back to the point, the, the current housing situation that we've seen in Jasper with the new developments off of that area specifically, those renters have dogs, and they do have common areas. Unfortunately, they do have to get on a leash, and the common area is very small. This would allow that new development there, those folks, plus the current residents. Uh, I actually spoke with a resident out at the new developments out there, the townhomes. They have a dog, and they enjoy the little area, but they would like to be able to take their dog off the leash, at least run free for a little bit. This would allow every citizen that operates.
Do we, we had a thing one time with the city where we had to arrange to their dogs.
Yes.
Do we, do we still do that, or?
I don't think it's been followed up, yeah.
I don't think it's been followed up.
Not since I've been here.
Has not been followed up.
Yeah.
I'm not even sure there's a fee associated. I think it was just asking folks to come in and-
Yeah, I think it was voluntarily.
What was the fee?
It's a trust, yeah.
We first got Lonny to work it for us.
We were the same time on our phone, but.
It's not in the budget.
It's what?
It's not in the budget.
Was asking where the, where the funding come from.
Do you have a recommendation on that? Do you have a recommendation on the funding?
Uh, I think the operating fund can absorb that, and Lisa, you may say yes or no to that.
We did have some. I believe it was in the budget.
December is coming. Uh, when you, when you make a move, immediately?
If approved, I would, uh, turn, uh, people loose on doing the fencing and start ordering the equipment.
Entertainer motion?
I make a motion, we approve the amount specified by our city manager.
It was eight thousand, uh, five hundred dollars?
Eight thousand five hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Okay, to build a dog park, for lack of a better term, or a dog run, two dog runs?
Actually, two dog runs.
And of course, the maintenance to continue with it.
Yeah.
Okay. Second, you got a motion and a second. Ann, second to the motion, discussion. No discussion? All favor vote with your hands? Opposed? Four-four, one opposed. Pet Ordinance First Reading. That thing's kind of running together. Alphabet. Pets.
A, for consideration as an addition to our current animal control ordinance, uh, cruelty to animals, and if you let me read it, uh, it shall be unlawful for any person to cause death or unjustified physical pain or suffering to any animal, regardless of whether or not said animal is domesticated or not by act of omission or because of willfully intent. This section shall specifically include and not be limited to the following examples of cruelty, uh, owner's failure to provide adequate medical care, water, food, uh, or humane, humane care for any domesticated animal, two, use of caustic, flammable boiling, or, or heated substances on any domesticated animal, three, leaving an animal unattended in a parked vehicle without proper ventilation. Nothing contained herein shall prohibit a person from killing or injuring an animal in defense of his or her own property or person, or person of, or property of another, and including, but not limited to, the killing of a domesticated animal, causing injury, uh, or damage to lives from po- uh, poultry. Nothing contained herein shall prohibit a person from, um, humanely killing an animal which is severely sick or injured. Method used in killing or injuring the animal shall be designed to be as humane as possible under the circumstances. A person who is hu- who humanely kills or injures an animal under the situations described shall li- shall incur no liability for the death or injury of said animal. Right of entry. An officer charged with responsibility of enforcing this chapter may use any force necessary to remove any animal confined in a closed vehicle in the ambient temperature of seventy degrees Fahrenheit or more, uh, or above outside the vehicle. If the vehicle is damaged during the removal near the city where the officer attempted to remove said animal, shall be liable for any damage to the vehicle or its components. This is something that's been requested by, uh, the animal control officer and also Jasper Police Department.
And I have a motion. So, have a motion to approve?
Say.
John, motion, current second. Discussion.
Does this take two readings? Is this an order?
Oh, this will be an order. So let's just consider this to be the first reading. And so, motion, take this to be the first reading, we just go ahead and approve. Discussion. I'm sorry. Um, have you run this by our city attorney?
Yes, Bill has had it.
Okay, and the only reason I ask that is because I spoke to the police chief up here, Shaw and Shine, and in this, we wanna make sure that we protect our police officers if it comes up to that point to where they have to physically enter a car, where the back end is gonna fall back on us. That's my way of thinking of that.
Which is the purpose for the request. It gives our officers some comfort in being able to handle the situation.
Any other discussion? Ben, all favorable, this be the first reading. Thank you, see you again next month, I'm over there. Ralph Hicks Circle, request city take ownership of him.
Have a request from David Chouse, who owns property that includes Ralph Hicks Circle. He is requesting that the city, he wants to feed the ownership of the street to the city. It doesn't meet city standards, and he's currently guttering.
Currently guttering, stroming.
He's requesting to, we take ownership, city take ownership.
It's right, right, real close with a stop sign.
Close, exactly. Yeah, off of.
Right there, I'll be able to stick that.
It's all for Phil and Dave, yeah. I can't remember the name of the business.
Little cul-de-sac.
We hit to where you.
How long is this better than acres?
It's, Tony, it doesn't give me the width. The roundabout is a fifty-foot radius, and the width of the road is twenty-seven foot asphalt, but it doesn't give me a length, so I really can't tell you the total acreage.
A little history on this, Tony, is, this was laid out, developed, and the property owners at that time lost it to the banks. The bank stole it to Mr. Shouse, and then he realized he'd been paying property tax on the road, and I saw our policy to take over roads that we didn't expect it to business part.
And I honestly remember having taken this action before, wondering if we just never recorded. And I, John doesn't remember.
I don't remember.
Either way, we need to take the action if, and we will ask, make sure that this gets recorded.
I don't know what you want to happen.
It may not, I've said.
Well, it's, it's just, I know, I know they lost in bankruptcy, and that's where it reappeared, and it just kinda died on a vine because it didn't save. But with that, did I get a motion?
No.
And a motion? I make a motion that we, the city take ownership of Ralph Hicks Circle as presented by the city manager. Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion, second, discussion. Be you none, all favorable by show of hands? Thank you, and that'll put it on our repaying list for the year. But I think it's pretty good shape there.
Yes.
Okay, I was on it today. Okay, millage rate advertisement approval. Lisa, item M.
Put a copy of the advertisement in your book, but I found out the inflationary growth for the city actually went down, so we're not required to roll back the millage rate. And this advertising is showing us keeping it the same. We had a growth, growth in taxes this year to increase our taxes approximately eighty-three, eighty-two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Because of the growth?
Yeah, not inflationary growth, but just annexing buildings.
Several buildings, several buildings built this year. And so our millage rate will be?
I'm proposing to leave it the same at four point six five five.
Four point six five five. Now, council, the budget is yet to be developed, and if you choose to raise it off of four point six five five, we will need to explain this to our constituency in an open hearing, and, but keep that in mind when you're wanting to build parks and these things, and cut out garbage, or employees, or whatever you're gonna do. That's how, that's the budget. And Jim, how much have you put into the budget process? Have you had a chance to meet with all the city department?
No, we have not been, or yet.
That needs to be done soon, and otherwise, we won't be able to do our budget on time. And what are the dates you have set out with us?
Uh, to prove it, October, in November, we'll be approving it in November.
We're gonna have several meetings.
A brief meeting, yeah, we'll have, we'll have two meetings in November.
The budget committee needs to meet?
Present it at the first of November, and approve it the first meeting in December, is what I usually try to do. And the budget committees, I have scheduled to meet in October, a couple of times in October. So we are getting, we are running short on time.
So we're, so we need to approve it by the, our first meeting in December. Tony, would you be able to replace Jim on the committee for the budget? I'd like to have you in there, I got John replacing Jim, give me kind of both sides of that. I'll look in at the budget, and that okay with you, Jim? Because we'll meet here on those dates, so replace Jim with Tony, Tony and John. And myself, and anyone else who would like to show up. Jim meets you today, but I think, I don't even wanna come, I say, it's pretty hard work. And, but there's gotta be a lot of work done before we get there, so. David, you got your budget ready yet?
I think all the budgets have been turned in, Lisa.
Okay.
Over runs on up today, and Jim, we're gonna have to pay it next year.
I don't even wanna see y'all's budget, I could imagine. Have you, you got your budget turning up?
Oh, yeah. Got a Learjet on it.
Somebody needs to go through this and sift through. We won't be able, this four point six five five won't be able to cover everything I think's coming at us. So, that being said, I'm not gonna be there, so we need to have this ready to go.
You don't plan to come to the budget meetings?
I'll come to budget meeting, but I'm not gonna meet with those guys and tell them they can't. Somebody needs to, I promise you. Just wanted to bring that up. Four point six five five, do we need to approve that now and try to live with it?
Well, you're approving me to go forward with the advertising.
Okay, with that, council, four point six five five will keep us, plus we'll have an eighty-two thousand dollar increase next year with our value. So we are making a little bit more money next year.
I've got that.
Huh?
I didn't spend that.
David. Oh, I can imagine.
What David doesn't spend, Rover will.
Well, David's gonna spend on the water department, Rover's gonna spend on this, on this money right here. But with that, four point six five five bills, we have an entertaining motion to move forward with this predetermined millage, and try to live with it.
I make a motion that we move forward with the four point six five five millage rate.
Got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Discussion. Ben, all favorable by show of hands? That's your name, you got something to work with, Lisa?
Yes, Lisa, you said the budget committee's gonna be in October?
Yes.
Do you have the dates for that?
Yes, sent them all out to you as scheduled, but I don't have it with me.
That's fine, I've got it, maybe, I just didn't know it was on there.
Kurt, you can't find a committee call.
Can I change it now, Kurt, or? I'd be glad you had the four point six five, let you do all the work you wanna do. But anyway, that being said, let's go to the next item. Mayor's report finance, Mr. Lisa.
In your packet, you have a copy of the, shoot, I've got a copy. Yeah, of my finance report for August of twenty eighteen. Local auction sales tax we collected, a hundred and eleven thousand one ninety-eight for a total this year of eight hundred and thirty-four thousand six hundred and twenty-eight, which is seventy-seven thousand three hundred dollars more than we collected at this point last year. The general fund, we're doing pretty good and staying within budget. And overall, and there's a few departments over a little bit, but overall. Let's see, the Floss Fund, which is Fund Three Twenty-One, we've collected a total this year so far of six hundred and forty-nine thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And there's a sheet in there.
What about the balance of the account?
Well.
Never mind, never mind.
Now, you got a copy of it too, I just.
Five hundred and twenty-eight, I think's what I saw today.
Do we have anything other payment projects this year?
I would like to get another one in. Really looking to complete the striping on the one we've already got. There's a few places still need to be done. I will, I would like to have a recommendation be it the next week.
Okay, and what, what date is the Floss ending? Do we have that date?
Let's see, it's six years, right, in fourteen, so it's mid, mid-year twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I've been working with, was twenty.
I found one, and it was five hundred and twenty-eight, seven hundred and fifteen dollars.
I didn't remember seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Well, with that, we've, all this money's committed to road and sidewalk, we got plenty to do with it to two thousand twenty, but we, we fear well that if we could keep our position, we can negotiate for some of our payments on that monster, Mr. Roper bought, fire truck engine, Mr. Hall was to build a treatment facility. We could, we could change our goals with those, with those projects. And, but we need to start discussing this now and be ready because the county don't like giving us twenty percent, so.
Jim, talking about striping, can you address the public about the parking places that they are within the guidelines?
I haven't seen it on the city ordinance, but I've been told that the city ordinance is eighteen feet. The state standard is eighteen feet, I've seen that. And our, all of our parallel parking is to state and city code. Unfortunately, some of them on East Street and Mark Whitfield in the past were somewhat longer. And that standard was probably meant for an area that had fewer F-150 extended cab and bed trucks than Pickens County has. So it is difficult to park on, for some people to park on an eighteen-foot line, between the eighteen-foot lines. But it is the standard and.
Why are you asking me?
Because the people are talking about it.
What's the point?
That it's too small. And what I wanted him to address was.
On Main Street or East Street? East Street.
The side streets.
Side streets. Yeah, side street.
Not the angle parking.
Like wherever. When they went back, they didn't have the old pattern prior, because we had a margin up, I think.
Yes, they were larger. Yes, they were larger.
So the news is, we added some spots, bad news is, some people have a difficulty getting parking in.
Yes, and that's why I asked you to address it, because that's my, that's what I've been telling people based on our conversation with that when they were talking.
So you're saying we got more parking spaces, just small.
And it is because ninety-four, six and one away. I think they are.
Anything else, were we done with the finance?
Yeah, I was just gonna say the water fund.
Oh, I, I started that, I apologize.
That's okay. And the water fund, we're right at budget, probably seventy-eight thousand is not recorded as expenses, so we're real, cutting it real close in the water fund. And I also put in your packet of checks, checks that we've written for five thousand and over for you to look at, and that's all, that's all.
Questions, council? Lonnie's not with us, Jim, you ain't wrote another report. Uh, Chief Love, item six.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The Jack the police department for the month of August responded to one thousand and one calls from service from a nine-one-one center, responded to fifty-five more vehicle accidents, total of a hundred and eighty-nine citations for following two DUI, hundred and twenty-seven speeding, eight seat belts, one record driver, one hundred trip motors, thirty-five miscellaneous violations, four suspended or revoked driver license, and two possession of marijuana less than average. Georgia State Patrol issued a total of eighty-seven citations for grand total, the city corps of two hundred and seventy-six. There are seven statements issued for the following, one for forgery in the fourth degree, one theft by taking, two theft by deception, one battery, one theft of motor vehicle felony, and one battery. Miscellaneous calls answered, fifty-six alarm calls, twenty-two disorderly, six harassment, investigated two burglaries, one, or eleven trespassing or ordering, eighty-three suspicious activity calls, and nineteen domestic disputes.
Question, you all, you are working this weekend.
All right. And the Jeep fest win.
All right.
So no failure to write turn only over?
Now we add a five dollars. You come out and you can go in.
Chief, I visited your department recently. Everyone there was in good shape and happy to see me. Clean department?
Yeah, we just recently had some renovation. Gave the mayor tour the other day, last week, I believe, or.
And I gave him permission.
Yeah. But Jim, they're there this week, he wanted to see it, so.
He looks wonderful there. She really does, kind of lots of proud.
It's something that Craig asked for a number of months ago, and unfortunately, it took a long time to get it done, but guys did a good job on it.
It does, it looks nice. Great job. Questions?
You wanna move over into the vacancy?
Eventually, we will grow eventually, I believe.
That, that building we purchased, it had four, or three or four units? And progressively, they've worked their way, all the way down.
Yeah, currently, the drug task force, we left that one last year over there, and.
They're moving into the schools?
Moving to the new sheriffs and executives that go over there. Don't know when it's gonna be, but it's coming soon.
They work well with us, and it's been a pretty good combination.
Oh, yeah.
They're made, kinda hate to see them go.
With the growth that we're experiencing, or we expect to experience, I'm sure.
I'm sorry, Sarah.
The growth we're going to experience that you're encountering now, our equipment, we're gonna hopefully in the budget bring up a little bit, we're gonna work on that, assuming.
Yes, you already got thirty percent of the budget, how much more do you want?
As much as you need.
No, that's not necessarily, yeah. We, we, we already got debates going up here.
Y'all done with me.
Yes, we are.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna give, we're gonna give you all Roper's budget, come up to you.
I want that Learjet to be red there.
It's gotta be green.
With the feet lines on the side.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. For the month of August, the city fire department responded to a hundred and one emergencies. Those were one structure fire inside the city, none outside. One vehicle fire in, none out, no grass fires in or out. Fourteen motor vehicle accidents with injuries inside the city, four outside. Thirty-two emergency medical responses inside, I'm sorry, thirty-three inside, thirty-two outside. Twelve other calls in, four outside. At the end of the month, nine hundred and sixteen total. Fire inspection with three sets of plans for renovation and construction, conducted that due to instructions.
Questions, council?
Please just start the fall, Steve.
I don't know, burn down, start October first, so.
Oh, I'll do September first.
October first.
Right in the fifth.
Better hurry.
Steve, can you give an update on the new equipment?
Uh, I have a date set with something, fire manufacturer, I'll be going to help. I'll be going to Ohio on the seventeenth of this month for the final inspection of the truck. Within a week of that, it should be in Alabama with all the equipment being managed, so we may actually have it at our Marvel Festival parade. Update on ISO. ISO is re-inspecting us on the thirteenth of this month. I'd hope to split that off a little longer, but.
Are we going to get a decrease in our ISO rating?
I'd like to go to a four, but I'd be happy to keep that five, to be quite honest at this point, but our goal is lower, yes, that's what we're going to. Meanwhile, we're going to inspect it on the thirteenth.
You go ahead and say we'd have had a fourth win in the next half of Georgia this summer.
Well, you know, if you buy me that lighter truck and that helicopter and all that.
It may be in the mail. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
John, you got the J Y S thing?
Their police agency do a well. I'd like to thank all the board members from the parents.
Did anybody get a chance, I know it's Jeep fest, did anybody get a chance to go to the football game Friday night?
Yes.
I, I coached football. I played football in Pickens County. I coached football in Pickens County and I watched many, many games. I went to the game Friday night and those kids or athletes that we put on the field the night were some of the best that I have ever seen in Pickens County. And I say that because they took out Peltor who beat us to death as long as I can remember. And Peltor was no, they weren't shoddy. They just got made look bad by a well-organized football team, so.
Good lineman.
Did you, did you, would you see some of them?
A good lineman. I've seen him play every game so far.
Well, they, they're thinking great. And that being said, I'd like to pass that on to J Y S. Because every one of those kids by name played J Y S, I think maybe one or two move-ins.
One or two, and Coach Parker's really worked well with us. He's been very, very proactive.
How's that going now?
It's going good.
Has he been coming to any of the practices? I know he's pretty busy.
He, he's involved.
I think they have a coach available to each of the J Y S. One of the high school coaches available to each team.
Well, you can watch some of the other teams in our region are on five fifteen. It's not matching what we're doing here. And football's not the match or gauge necessarily of the community, but it's not, but sometimes when you see what the schools are doing. With that being said, we entertain a motion.